I had the meeting with the next board. I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to your republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, this meeting is properly hosted, no, not supposed to be. And you need a who up at the end?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All the papers let's say hi. All right, all the same time, motion is carried. Okay, we're gonna turn it into delegation to be heard. I got several would like to speak. So. Yeah, no, yeah, a large meeting type thing, I would say, hey, we're gonna limit the speaking, but I only have several, so you can address the board. Okay, the way I do our meetings here, if this is the audience, it's time to speak. So if somebody wants to get in on the discussion when we get into the action item, I don't have conversation from the audience, that section is for the board for discussion. So give you another opportunity, after knowing that you would like to change your response down here and speak to us, I will allow that, otherwise we'll go with people that are on the list here asking. So we will start with Jason Boon.
Hi, I'm Jason, I live in the village of Burton here, my daughter goes to second grade. I want to first of all commend the staff, school board for giving your time and talents, really appreciate it, fantastic, obviously we got a fantastic couple of schools here. Thanks to Ron Ross for all the work you do. I know you've each heard of me, from me through the week, I represent the state senator that works in this area, he's put out a statement in the last two weeks that he is pushing for parents to have options on masks along with the students. My second grade daughter this week, I had no idea this was even going on, but she's been wearing the mask and I told her there's a meeting tonight that we might be able to vote on doing wear of masks for the remainder of the year, and she said to me, you know, Dad? I so hope that that goes through because I honestly have had trouble breathing with this mask on throughout the year, and I said, honey, why have you not told me this? All year you went through it, and she thought that she would be in trouble because that was a policy within the school, so I'll cut to the chase. I've emailed all of you, I'm going to push that somebody makes a motion tonight to make masks optional for the remainder of the year. I know the recommendation of our administration is to keep it in place for the final ruling is because these kids are used to the masks. I want the kids to have a sense of normalcy going forward for the remainder of the year so they can get in the fall and have normal again. Thank you again for all your hard work, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Jennifer Matic, you want to speak?
I agree.
You're good. Jennifer Hoffman has question mark there.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if I wanted to speak or not, maybe I'll just say something very quickly, nothing formally prepared. Thank you to everyone who does such a great job in keeping us open from day one, very commendable, you know, last year was cut short, you know, my daughter who graduated from her from last year was cut short of her eighth grade year, her celebration. I have a son now who's going to be an eighth grader and I'd like to see him start a normal eighth grade year and be able to have a normal graduation and experience some of the things that she missed out on at the end of her time at Martin. You know, I think we hear a lot about health and health conditions and, you know, wearing the mask to protect people because of different underlying health conditions with individuals, but I don't think we've heard a lot about mental health and that is a medical condition as well and what that's doing to our children and what it's continuing to do to our children in the long term basis, and I really sincerely ask the board to consider that, these kids have endured a lot. Martin has a bubble for teachers to be able to take their masks off and to teach in. Our students do not have a bubble to take their masks off and learn in, so that's something that I'd really like for you to consider and to think about. Yes, we only have 10 more days in school left, but can the kids have a little bit of normalcy for the remainder of the year? It's what I'm asking you to sincerely consider the kids and what they've had to endure, so thank you very much.
Rin.
Hey there, Jerry, I'm masks related. As an educator and teacher and administrator, I have a view of the science curriculum and I know that the board do value our opinion as parents, as educators in this room. There is a piece of the curriculum, the new science curriculum that I think should be looked at and discussed for viewing tonight. It's a piece on global warming, we all have varying opinions about global warming, but in middle school we're teaching students how to be critical thinkers. Some are there yet, some are mature to make their own opinions, but they're not all there yet, so I feel like putting that one perspective and then testing our students on global warming is appropriate, yes, I think exposure to global warming as a theory of all other theories about what's happening in our country is very appropriate, but not one, one theory and one standard. It is not in the Wisconsin standards, science standards, but it is a part of the new curriculum that we are adopting that I believe is robust and one that's all, but that's just one piece I wanted to hear.
Okay, Jennifer, do you have any more that would like to speak? Okay, Andrew, next one.
Hello, everyone, I'm a fourth grade teacher in our building. I'm here as well about the masks, I'm not here to speak about the summer school or next year, that's a decision for you to make on your own, but I'm here to advocate for the last 10 days that we do keep the mask. The reason I would advocate for this, I can highly appreciate while everyone here would be advocating for their own child, and I think as parents they absolutely should be advocating for their child, however, we as this school need to advocate for all children, and I believe that there are many children who would be negatively impacted by removing the mask mandate with a few days left. Those students who don't have the choice, and ultimately it's always the parent's choice, and those students would have that choice taken away by their families for various reasons if they had to be removed from school for the last two weeks because we removed the mask mandate. So I would highly encourage that when you are making the decision that, yes, you consider your own child and everyone's voice here, but keep in mind that there are 800 and some students here who don't all feel the same way, so I just want to make sure that as a board we consider we represent each and every child in this industry and not just the majority. So that's all I have.
And then I have a show.
I spoke at the Arrowhead meeting and really didn't do anything, but I just, I just, I just wanted to be here because my son goes here now, my two other kids are gonna go here, and I want, I want to, or parents' choice to be more in the boards, in the board's eyes, so that we can, as parents, decide what our, what our kids can and cannot do, especially with getting, I'm a little bit flustered now, sorry, but my, my kid, my kid comes home every day, he's hot, he doesn't know, he doesn't know what some of his other kids look like because the masks are on, you know, I, I, I'm not for, I'm for parent, parents' choice, and I think that should always be the way. I understand that some kids might want to wear the mask, right? Some parents might have kids where the parents don't want the mask and the kid wants the mask, you know, that's a discussion that you can have in your house, but we need, we need to get back to normal sooner than later, and it is 10 days, but I think it would set a good precedent to the other schools and the other boards going forward that we are making a stance and opening our schools back up so that our kids can breathe and interact more normally, so that next year they know what their friends are gonna look like. I know recess, recess they have the masks down and stuff, but you know, facial expressions are so important, you can tell a lot about someone by looking at their face when they're talking to you, right? So I, I think the masks need to come down, they need to be able to smile at their, at their kids during the day. If you want to keep the mask, if certain kids want to keep their masks on, keep your masks on, you know, whatever makes you comfortable, you can, but I think that it should be the parents' choice moving forward. And on another note with the environmental thing, my kid hit mom the other day and said, Dad, your truck is going to earth, so that was fun too. Yeah, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else, Jennifer?
I don't, there are a couple people who said they were undecided, so I don't know if anybody else has changed their mind, but.
Have you got a name?
I have two, okay, yep, I have two. One of them is from Alyssa Schultz-Lewski. Ron, I'm writing to you as a parent concerned about the physical, mental, social, and emotional health implications that current isolation, quarantine, and mask requirements are having on our children, and ask the board to vote in favor of ending Martin's mask mandate and the quarantine requirements immediately. These risks pose a greater threat to our children than the virus itself. I do not support waiting any longer to implement these changes than 8:30 a.m. tomorrow or at the beginning of the school day. As you know, my family has been quarantined twice this school year and four times altogether. My son and I have always tested negative, both for active infections and antibodies despite having had very close contact. During quarantine, my son's quality of education was poor at best, this is not a reflection on his teacher, who I know did her best to give individualized attention to the entire room of students. My son's quality of work declined greatly, virtual learning is not a viable option. Any decision regarding one's health is very personal and should always be respected, like any other, the solution is, the, the solution to this is not a one size fits all, neither the school board nor any other policymakers in charge of my son's medical decisions, those are between me and his doctor. I understand that the school was forced to comply with the governor's mask mandate at the beginning of the school year, such a mandate no longer exists. Surrounding schools and districts have already made this decision, very easy and have implemented it. I have faith that the board will act expeditiously in making the same decision. Thank you, Alyssa Lewski.
I have one more, from Heather Oldway, please unmask our children today. Signed, Heather. Okay, anyone else want to speak?
I just want to make a few comments about the effectiveness and the just general logic, I don't want to, you know, bail different plans and things, but last March when this all hit and we all came home and a lot of our businesses were affected and, you know, we, we had four rounds of layoffs, and I spent three of those four rounds of layoffs just developing and designing an N95 equivalent mask for people when we didn't have anything available at all, right, for our first responders and all sorts of things. At that time we were really scared, we didn't know anything about this, we didn't know what was gonna happen, where it was gonna go, but I spent hours, you know, through 1, 2, 3 in the morning in labs doing sodium chloride testing on different fabric materials, on different N95 compliant materials, you know, everything from furnace filters, you name it, right, trying to figure out, understand what it was gonna take to get down to a level of filtration that was gonna have any impact on, you know, what we were doing. And we tested over 53 different materials, and, you know, it was, what, I won't say what's effective or not, but I will say it was very, very clear in this testing that trying to stop something like this with a cotton mask is like, you know, throwing a baseball through a hole much bigger than this, right? And so if you look at what happens after 3:30 and these kids are going out and they're jumping on trampolines, they're going trampoline parks, and they're having fun like they should be, and they're doing the kid things, and there's precedent, as people mentioned all around us, of schools that have now terminated this and, and, and gone forward with it, and, you know, so far I don't see any evidence in the data that there's a huge reaction, that there's a spike going on, and in eight days of schools left, if we really think about the law, the logic behind this, the, the fact that we're gonna hurt somebody or do something to somebody by lifting masks for eight days, I, I struggle there, so that's just from kind of an engineering perspective, having been someone who's cared about people, really designed and worked on this type of thing with the intent of helping people, and now later as we understand more about the virus and we understand more about, you know, the true effectiveness of the masks and what we're wearing and what we're doing, you know, I, I vote for the choice.
Anyone else?
I have, this is my fourth school board meeting that I've been to, I am a Burton resident, and it's great to be here, it brings back some memories, I have a junior at Arrowhead right now. I've read the board packet from the recommendation that said it would be presented to me, I don't want to take any thunder away. The complexion of this board has changed drastically the last year or so, and I think that's to a positive, and I've heard three super attendants, not including this one, that have parroted each other saying the same thing, and I would highly recommend that this board listen to your superintendent and take to heart what he recommends this thing. Thank you.
I'd like to speak, I've got two kids here at Martin, and so calling to the masks really places that with these kids, and if you think about our country, it's all built on greed, and it's all built on choice, and it's all built on making the best decision for you and your family. The CDC, they don't know what's going on here in Martin, we do, the parents here do, and nobody is saying, if you want to wear a mask, wear it, nobody's telling you you can't. From what I hear, every parent here is just asking for the right to choose and letting their kids choose what's best for them, whether it's eight days or 80 days, it's irrelevant, it's time to move forward, it's time to give parents the choice, they're the ones that pay taxes, they're the ones who support this rule. It's time to move forward, and it's time to give them the choice and put the power back in their hands. The power shouldn't be in the CDC's hands, the government's hands, or anybody's hands, it should be us, parents, we make the decisions for our kids and working what's best in our house, and that's what should matter most.
And so. Okay, anybody else? Okay. I run a tight meeting, so we're not, we're moving into the next section. I will not take any discussion from your audience. So we are on two, new business discussion and possible action of staff and students' masking policy and COVID mitigation, including but not limited to quarantine, do possible deployment, possible action.
I'd like to make a motion if that's allowed.
You can make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to group following changes to our COVID mitigation strategies. Number one, change the mask policy immediately to optional for students, teachers, staff for the remainder of the existing, existing school year, summer school and the 21, 22 school year. Remove the quarantine rules which will allow parents, teachers, and staff to determine when they are feeling better in order to return to school and work. Remove immediately any restrictions we have on parent volunteers, assistant teachers, and staff within the walls of our school, and remove immediately any restrictions we have on classroom treats.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion, that's second, is there a discussion?
What is the rationale behind treats and indoor volunteers for the remainder of the year? Because I definitely support the outdoor volunteers for celebration. I just want to hear some.
Let me, if we go with the treats. We've all gone on a quick trip and got a donut, I'm sure, in the last 12 months? We've all gone to the grocery store, maybe got a donut there, we got meat in the winter? I have not seen, and, and someone can forward it to me if there is, but I have not seen a massive outbreak or, or issue with treats or food at the beginning of the pandemic in COVID, it's, so I, you know, to me, I look at that as, I understand why we made that decision four months ago, we didn't know COVID helped that way. As far as classroom volunteers, I know that there are moms out there that love cleaning apart the classroom, and there's teachers that love helping the house, and so if there's an ability for those folks to come in between one and the other year, I'd like that to be allowed, so that the moms and dads out there can have that joy of helping and being in the classroom, and the teachers can have the opportunity, if, if there's an opportunity, I don't know if there's an opportunity, I wasn't a parent that did that, like, I did that on behalf of our family, but I know that it's important to a lot of people, I just would like to see that returned.
You want to, I'm preparing front of children, and my only question is, on the treats, you said because of, you, you have policy in place because of allergies and stuff like that.
We would, in, in, in the motion, we would fall back to our classroom policies of, of, you know, we have allergies, you know, we would still be able to maintain that, that environment now, we wouldn't need time to be able to put that into play because we need to notify, we say immediately, I can't get to bring stuff into school tomorrow because I don't know, you know, we haven't identified what classrooms can bring peanuts or whatever it might be to make sure that we have a safety fire. So, what I think.
I'd like this to be starting actually immediately, I'd like to keep the mask off my face. Could you rescind that piece of treats so that we don't have to have a waiting period for this to be implemented?
Well, I would, I, just again, if I can continue just a little bit too as well, yeah, I understand the mandate, and, and if this is the motion that, that moves forward, I would ask the board for time, very similar to the treats, but very similar to volunteers as well, we're gonna have to do background checks and, and, and some things that we just need to get ahead of, but the other piece is, is from the masking, again, just asking for our families the choice if in fact this does move forward, and to prepare our staff for virtual learning, because again, this would give us two full days to be able to prepare virtual learning materials if in fact people would really want to go back to virtual or go to virtual.
I understand that, Ron, if don't we have virtual.
Not all classrooms. Not all classrooms are virtual, look, some classrooms do not have virtual settings, and particularly at Martin Primary School, because at the intermediate school, if you have one fifth grader saying it's virtual, all of the core teachers have that child, compared to at Martin Primary School, if you have a third grader or a second grader out, they are self-contained, so that one classroom teacher then would manage the virtual learning for that child, so it would significantly impact, I'm gonna say, any child who would go through, but at Martin Primary School would be significantly impacted, because that child may or may not have been virtual all year, so again, we would have to bring them up to speed, having three days, we'd be able to sit down with them and model some of that too as well, but it also.
You weren't gonna get three days, you need it.
That's fine, I mean, it's a way to rationalize.
What were you planning without three days?
What would we plan without three days? An email would go out as soon as the meeting adjourned, saying, this is the case, if in fact you need to keep your child home, please notify your principal and the office, and we'll begin to coordinate education, not tomorrow, more than likely they would miss tomorrow's school day, unless we can get them in, at the intermediate school they'd probably be able to send some Google codes, but at Martin Primary School, if you're gonna withhold a five year from school because of a parent's choice, more than likely at Martin Primary School, parents will have to stay home for work or find different care compared to the intermediate level too, so by extending it to, what I would recommend again in the packet, to first, allows families and the school time to prepare in all of those areas, classroom treats, parent volunteers, the quarantine rules obviously are much more simple because as you saw in our, in our COVID update, we've had very little direct contact based on our spacing, and to Andrew's point too, it's, we don't have any scientific evidence either globally or regionally or nationally that there's outbreaks in schools who have the distance and the masking that we have.
So go back to my original question. You knew that it was coming.
Yep. No, I, we did not know it was coming, I mean, it's a possibility, it was a possibility.
Very good, correct.
Email to the teachers too.
Oh, the teachers are, the, the teachers, yep, correct, yeah, I did notify our staff, I have not notified our families outside of sending the board packet highlighting that this is an option, so families could possibly prepare if they needed to or start to kind of make some of those family decisions from that standpoint too as well.
Because we, you know, what we're looking at is, so it's, it's up to the parents, and if the parents want their children getting the mask, that's fine.
Right, and if that's, I'm just asking for more time, the school districts that did immediately, the recommendation to, to other schools that have on this, the more time the better, for families and staff to prepare, not only for education, but also the kids, the environment, the social environment that is gonna change, not which we know it is, but just to kind of give people a little heads up with the transition.
So, we've got this on, on the agenda for a month, you know, this was a potential option, we have not prepared in advance for this, it sounds like, that we have pre-put together potential learning packets or?
No, I'm not gonna ask our staff to do that for, for what is yet, no, because we, we can't send Google codes, we can, I mean, our staff will send, you know, Google codes and particularly intermediate school, it's gonna, it's gonna be much, much more seamless than it is primary school, but no, I wasn't gonna ask our staff to prepare five or six additional learning packets for Wednesday, Thursday, or Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, in anticipation that it may or may not happen.
My next question is, so since this has been on the agenda, this is our last board meeting, we get into this topic, since then, how many, how many emails, phone calls have you received saying, Ron, if the school likes to go with a choice option on masks, I'm taking like the going to the virtual option, how many?
Zero, zero, not one parent has expressed to me that they will be keeping their child home, these are all what if scenarios, I certainly, yep, I, for sure, I just, let's get, because I just wanted to know. And from the email contacts that I've had, I got two more today forwarded to me, again, maybe the board, I, I got a couple, but it was about 14, it gets 14 out of, you know, over 500 families, and it's been about six and eight, six for keeping masks on, eight for removing, making it either optional or recommended.
As, back in there, I don't want to speak on three with us, you've been all right, I have one question, I've got a few notes sent in.
Yes.
You have a question? Okay, and, and answer individually for each of your buildings, please, if we were to immediately change the mask requirement for tomorrow, do you foresee there being any, you know, that positive or negative impact from an educational perspective in terms of those, you know, amount of work that would be, you know, that would get done, I mean, yes, we only have nine days of school left, and some of those days are, you know, locked out for fun things, you know, but there's also work that needs to get done, so, you know, I don't know, you know, we often talk about, you know, days after Christmas being, you know, kind of wasted days, or, or right before Christmas, you know, when there's these bigger events, you kind of lose some momentum in terms of productivity, is that a concern or we think it'll just be okay?
I'm going to take the feedback that we received from other school districts and help launching the meeting that masks changed, and the feedback that I've gotten, I would say. And the feedback that I've gotten, I would say the same, my colleagues is, it is quite disruptive. The immediate, that's all I can give at this point, that helps.
So what impact, uh, you know, education of our students?
Yes, and any change impact education.
Routines.
Routines are important, routines are so important, we built it. So that's, that's just the move.
I would, I would say the routines and the other thing that would come into play is those students who are choosing to wear masks and those who are not choosing to wear masks based on how their, their, their families do that. Um, there's always that chance for some behavioral issues that might occur with regards to making fun of Jay because he's wearing a mask and Johnny because he's not wearing a mask. So those things come into play, well, I've heard from some of my educator friends that that was an issue that occurred once they made changes, uh, quickly. It's not that we can't handle those, but those are things that concern.
Back to the issue, I think we dealt with that.
We would put it in, I mean, obviously, we would have announcements and, and understanding and things like that. And that would be ready, we will be ready from a social, emotional component the best as we can tomorrow. Um, the, the districts who would, and I can't really even say what happens after, you know, because the districts who have waited, you know, a few days, uh, we've heard very different things compared to the Al Brooks and the water shots, just from our colleagues. And I do believe, uh, one of, uh, one of our parents who's an educator did communicate that to the board as well.
Any more discussion?
Hey, I'm sorry, there was a, uh, question to me posed earlier about adjusting my motion or amending my motion. So I would, I would amend it to remove the treat. Right, I would have, I would then, um, were immediately on the restrictions of parent volunteers and have that say as long as they pass the needed background checks that they do refer.
So, yeah, it, it, it all depends on what the, uh, the volunteer is needed for. I think it's, uh, sometimes it's just coming through and getting our wrapper system back up and doing that too. It all depends if we're going off campus, can do a little bit more detailed one, something like that. So I would, so ultimately, it'd be immediately, but obviously, we're gonna do our internal checks to make sure that. Subject, subject to our visitor policy.
Visitor policy, if you need to serve a proper. Okay, is there any, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All the same side.
Aye.
Motion's carried. Day twenty-four.
Thank you all.
Your own vote is safe. Okay, now, we're just a second, a minute, and there are any additions or corrections? All in favor then say aye. Aye. All the same side. Okay, we're on to the financial report and bill listing.
So make our motion of truth following items on the voucher listing, uh, dated April twentieth, twenty twenty-one, through May thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, payroll check number, uh, five five three seven nine six, five five three seven nine six, amount of fifty-three dollars and cents. Direct deposit number nine zero 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 five four two six three through nine zero 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 five four three seven one, amount of forty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars and cents. Wire transfer, uh, wire number two zero two zero zero two eight zero through two zero two zero zero three zero zero, the amount of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred and sixty and eighty cents for total payroll of three hundred and seventy-five thousand six hundred and sixty-one thousand, six, sorry, three hundred and seventy-five thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty-two cents. Accounts payable check number five four six nine seven through five four seven one three, total amount of ninety thousand thirty-one dollars and forty cents. Wire transfer two zero two zero zero two eighty-two through two zero two zero zero two nine two, the amount of two thousand four ninety-seven and fourteen cents. Credit card transactions four two zero two one, the amount of twenty-two thousand two eighty-three and fifty cents. ACH direct deposit two zero two one zero 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 six six through two zero two one zero 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 seven two five hundred and four dollars and sixty-nine cents for total accounts payable, one hundred and fifteen thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-three cents. Total disbursements four hundred and ninety-nine seventy-seven and ninety-five cents.
We have a motion, a second to approve the bill listing. Any questions? All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Motion's carried. We're on to the district administration report, the donations.
Sure, we'd like to thank the PTO again for fulfilling teacher grants. Uh, this past month, Melissa Crowe's teacher grant was fulfilled for a hundred and sixty-six eighty-eight. Uh, Melissa received dry erase boards, letters, book baskets, uh, so again, very, very much thank you. So just looking for a motion to accept the donations as presented.
Good, and what's that say? All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
All the same side, motion's carried. We're on to personnel action.
Sure, um, in, in the board packet, uh, again, I did add a, a late recommendation for a teacher, individual teacher contract. Uh, would like to recommend, uh, Joy Bundrock, Aaron Sanger, and Kelly McCorkin, as well as Alexis Faye. Uh, Joy is gonna be, we're recommending to go into second grade. Um, Aaron is, uh, we're recommending to do the six-eight RLA, uh, intermediate school, and Kelly McCorkin would be for first grade as well, and Alexis would be for third grade. So a little bio in there in the board packet from that standpoint too. Uh, the, uh, resignation that we have is from Patrick Milton. Uh, we wish him the best of luck, he's an intermediate school special ed teacher, he's been with us for the last six years, but approximately thirty, I do believe, in education. So we wish, uh, Patrick has the best in his future endeavors. So again, just looking for a motion to approve the individual feature contracts for Joy Bundrock, Aaron Sanger, Alexis Faye, and Kelly McCorkin as presented, and then followed with a, uh, motion to approve the letter of resignation by Patrick Milton.
I'll make a motion to approve the individual feature contracts for Joy Bundrock, Aaron Sanger, and Alexis Faye and Kelly McCorkin.
I'll second.
The motion is second, are there any questions? All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Motion's carried.
I'll make a motion to approve the letter of resignation by Patrick Milton. Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second to accept the resignation of Patrick Milton. Any questions? All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Motion's carried. We're on to information.
Sure, a couple pieces I must wanted to share with the, the board, and again, thank you very much to, uh, Mary Iwansky, as well as a lot of our elected teachers, but Mary particularly has been working individually with our staff to create what we believe is a, uh, a pretty robust opportunities for our kids who are at five-eight to utilize our new spaces. So, um, we're gonna be sharing those with families. Jay, I think probably later this week, tomorrow, tomorrow they're gonna be going out, and we're gonna be getting our kids scheduled, uh, very shortly, starting next week too. So all the way from woods to family consumer ed, to more art, to fitness, to economics, to passion projects. I know I missed a whole bunch in there too, so, but, uh, we're really excited about our new opportunities that three models are gonna be giving to us. And a big thank you to our staff who has, uh, stepped out of a, a lot of comfort level. Uh, and particularly, uh, staff who are gonna be teaching some things out of their licensure areas too as well. And you can't forget about, obviously, a robust art program as well as a performing artist with a lot of new, uh, music, singing, vocal, but also some other, uh, continued arts, fine arts too as well. So real excited to put that forward to our kids, uh, and give them forward that too as well. So, um, speaking of the intermediate school, the remodel continues to go very, very well. Uh, we are hopefully on track for phase one as you kind of walk in. That's the, uh, office area is, uh, drywall paint, actually, looks starting to look like an office, great. And then right on the other side of this wall is gonna be our new kitchen, and, uh, they've got all of the underground plumbing and water and electric is all, uh, in there and, uh, just getting ready for, put some walls up and some equipment in there too, so very exciting times, so again. And we'll continue to push pictures out, real excited about the opportunities that are coming up too as well. Um, finally, end of the year update, again, we've got a lot of things going, uh, as it relates to celebration days, field trips, and, uh, just also finishing up assessment as well, just kind of monitoring progress, uh, putting some plans together, not only for next fall, but also for the summer school program as, uh, things are winding down here very, very quickly as of the morning days is upcoming again. So things are moving really, really fast, and a big thank you to our staff who, uh, again, can be pushing forward because things are getting a little squirrely with the, uh, the warm weather outside, so. Things are wrapping up, and, uh, we'll move forward these next nine days, away we go.
Okay, we're on to committee report, we have the finance committee.
Yeah, finance committee, my, uh, Thursday, May thirteenth, um, and we discussed the preliminary budget for the twenty twenty-one to twenty-two for this year. So I linked in the presentation, uh, the revenue worksheet and the proposed budget summary. So all presentations and detail on that here, but that was what we talked about, right?
The man policy.
Yeah, same thing, policy committee, uh, you'll see later in new business, first, uh, look at the employee handbook, so you'll notice, uh, a few changes in there, but, uh, we'll address that more in detail and, uh, in new business.
Okay, we are on to. We've got new business, preliminary proposal presentation.
Um, for those of you who don't know, I'm a business manager for the district. And today we're gonna talk about the preliminary budget. So I've got the agenda up here, we're gonna go over some things, um, mostly focusing on what is going on at the state level and what those factors could mean for Merton, uh, written specifically. Um, we're gonna talk about the revenue limit a little bit, state aid, general revenues in the next five years, um, and some projects that are going on at the district right now. So the goals of the budget, um, just like whatever you need to have Merton, I, I just wanna keep the focus on our mission statement. So supporting our staff and students and the work that they took here, um, for their, their education. So I, I just always wanna keep the focus on providing them with the resources that they need and also to demonstrate this work responsibility within the community. So our timeline right now, we're in May, so I'm presenting to you the preliminary budget. Um, one minute I just wanna say with the preliminary too is that all of this will change, all of this will change. So we're not gonna have our final numbers until fall. So the point of the preliminary budget is that our district, well, not our district, schools, the fiscal year ends June thirtieth. So we basically need some sort of plan to continue to be able to, uh, have expenditures starting July first. So everything we're gonna, gonna talk about tonight is my best guess. Um, so right now, we're in May, we're gonna do the budget, the preliminary budget. Then in summer, um, right now, we are having a biannual governor's budget, so the twenty twenty-one to twenty-three budget is in development right now with the state. Um, and then in September, we'll do the annual meeting and the third Friday com, which gives us our membership for the year. And then in October, we'll get all of our final numbers for aid and property value, and then we'll be able to certify the tax levy at that point. Um, so a couple things going on with the state budget right now. There's a proposal of three point two billion dollars to increase the general purpose revenue fund. Half of that is slated for K twelve education. Um, some of the components of that are an increase to state aid, an increase to special education funding, and, um, an increase to the revenue limit ceiling. So whether those factors get passed or not, or they could get passed in, um, a smaller capacity or it could be a combination, um, is, is yet to be determined, but that's a large dollar amount. So again, whether what gets approved versus what doesn't, um, we won't know yet, but hopefully we'll know in summer. Um, so we kind of talked about that, but for people, the revenue limit ceiling and the special end are big potential changes at the state level right now. Um, enrollment is another big factor, so the revenue co, well, revenue limit calculation is based on alternate enrollment students. So enrollment is kind of how we get to that number. Um, so right now, we have a good strong summer school numbers, we're about, um, nearly the pre-COVID, so that's really encouraging to see. Um, and then we also have a growing four K for next year. So we've got about ten more kids enrolled at this point compared to where we were at this point last year. Um, and then the property valuation is also a big factor in the budget and inside the revenue limit. So our property valuation in Merton, um, will help kind of drive how much of our money comes from the, um, tax levy and then how much comes from state aid. So, um, when I was developing the budget, the preliminary budget, I wanted to be conservative with our revenues because it's a lot easier to get our revenue back, um, than it is to account for it in May and then have to remove it from somewhere. So I just had, um, assumptions that the revenue limit was not going to receive any increase, um, no increase to special education funding, and then we did negotiate and settle. So our teachers are going to be receiving an average of two point one four percent, um, to their salary, and then one point five is proposed for admin and the support staff. Um, I'm estimating an increase of five and a half percent of property value, so that might seem, um, like it's too much, but last year, our property value increased by seven and a half percent. So I think this is, um, likely. And then no change in open enrollment, and then I'm making an assumption for our CASSER grant that's gonna come from the federal dollars. So the revenue limit calculation is the maximum amount of money that a school is allowed to raise through state aid and property taxes. So this is where the FTE with the membership comes in, so four K, because those kids come for half of the day, they're counted at sixty percent, um, and then the summer school counts for forty percent based on the minutes of instruction provided. So that's kind of how that plays in, um, to that. And then the other big piece of the revenue limit is state aid. So you've got the property value and the tax levy and the state aid on the other hand. State aid, um, is, the, basically, it's a form of, that the state implements, um, to try to equalize districts across the state, um, so that everybody gets a, their, their, their share of funding essentially. Martin is property wealthy, so when we are property wealthy, we will more than likely receive less money from the state in state aid. Here's a preliminary revenue estimate, so all in, right now, we will be having about nine point six, nine point seven million dollars for a very early estimate on our revenue right now. Um, as we know, the largest revenue source is the tax levy in the state aid, and it comes for about eighty-one percent of our revenue. And, um, again, this is, this is all gonna change because these are just best estimates at this point. So some of the things, like I've been sitting here telling you guys, like, this is the worst case scenario. So something that could potentially be a better case scenario, these are some of the maximum amounts, uh, of dollars that we could receive if the state budget was passed in its full, um, proposed amounts. So if the revenue limit increases, that would mean a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars more for us as revenue. And if the special education increase rate now, we get about twenty-eight percent of our eligible expenses reapers, um, and the proposal goes up to forty-five percent, so that's a significant dollar amount for us as well. Uh, we've got some projects going on at Merton, we've got the intermediate remodel, as we know, we've got the curriculum implementation, um, for science, social studies, and human growth and development. We have, um, an incoming student in the fall who is gonna be high needs with special education. We have an incoming student in the fall who is going to be high needs with special education. So, we need to accommodate those needs of that student. So, we can remodel a bathroom in this building to meet that child's needs and provide the appropriate public education. We have our computer servers. So, our computer servers are on their way to access lessons, so we will need to replace them. And that will be about a sixty to seventy thousand dollar project. So, here's some bigger dollar amounts. Second grade furniture, we, right now we have that big section of first grade, so they're going to roll up. And then I'll become second graders, so then we need to build a second grade classroom. So, we'll be needing to improve some furniture as well. So, projects are not the only thing we need to buy next year. We have staffing expenses, we've got salaries and benefits. Salaries and benefits in the general fund make up about sixty-five percent of the total. When you add in the special education salaries and benefits, you're getting around seventy-seven percent of our total. Which is, that's fine, that's normal. Education is a service industry. Our focus is hiring the best teachers. So, the worst case right now with frozen revenue and all the expenses, you know, that we know of at this point. We're looking at a deficit of eighty-six thousand dollars. Keep in mind, all of this will change. And eighty-six thousand is, it's like a big amount, but it's also not. So, that could be a salary and benefits package that we, you know, have budgeted for a higher amount. And maybe we can find a different, you know, a quality fit, but for a lower cost of that complaining that it could be, we get a pullback from a project that we built that comes back twenty thousand dollars less, and these things happen. So, building the budget, you always want to have your expenses that, you don't want to go the opposite direction where you're expecting something to be fifty thousand and seventy-five. So, so we're looking at a deficit preliminarily. This will not be the case when we present the final budget in October. And then we'll have all of our numbers from the state. And again, I don't think that means what the past in its full proposal. But I do think there might be some movement behind increasing one of those additional revenue sources. So, if we can get even, you know, something that will help balance. So, our fund balance, right now, we have about three, well, I shouldn't say right now. Twenty nineteen, twenty school year, at the end, we had about three point six million dollars in fund balance for about thirty-nine percent of expenditures. So, we're spending those dollars at the intermediate remodel that was planned, that was planned, you know, and there's a lot of thought behind it. So, even after the remodel is completed, we remove two point three million dollars in expenses. We will still have about one point four million dollars in our fund balance. And fund balance, it's not cash, it's not a savings account, think of it like equity. It's basically like an equity account. So, so that's great, that's still extremely healthy for a district. Merton is really in a, in a great financial position. And then, so S R two, S R two is the elementary and secondary school emergency relief. This is federal dollars that we're going to get. It's a one-time inflection of cash. We don't have our final dollar amount yet. The reason for that is there's a portion of this money, that's sixty-five million discretionary funds that's being allocated by the state right now based on hours of paying person instruction. So, we won't have our final S R two allocation probably until summer, maybe early fall, hopefully summer. And then at that point, we can decide what we want to spend that, those dollars on, what's best for the district. And, you know, if it's addressing learning loss, all kinds of things, there's a lot of allowable costs with S R two. And then my last slide for the night is a food service update. So, the U S T A did declare that for twenty-one to twenty-two lunch, school lunch will be free again. So, I think that's, that's great, that's going to be great for our families. I think it helps, you know, financially and just cuts down on time. You don't have to pack lunches every single day. I remember those days. So, that's what I think through twenty-one, twenty-two. We're not sure what the deal will be after that. But our program has done well. And with the kitchen right over there being remodeled here at this building, we were able to take seventy-three thousand dollars out of the fund fifty, which is the food service fund, to pay for some of our regular equipment. So, our wak and cooler and some of that, I think we got like the range food. It was, it was equipment that was needed. And now that kitchen will be able to have better capacity to expand. Or sorry, to service the expanding food service program. Questions? Again, just preliminary updates. All right, thank you.
Thank you, April.
Okay, we're on to the action item here for the full budget.
Attached is our preliminary budget. You just saw the preliminary presentation and also the proposed revenue limit worksheet. Ultimately, our fiscal year starts July first. And every year at this time, we ask the board to approve the preliminary budget. And like April said, things are going to change, but we need to start spending dollars after July one. So, for the subterm fiscal year. So, the administration is looking for a recommendation to approve the proposed preliminary twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
Give me a motion, a second. Any questions? On favor then say aye. All right, both same time. Motion carried. We're on to the final reading of the new six eight science curriculum.
Dean, can I address the comment about the global warming? Sure, yeah, and I can forward it onto the board as well. The global warming or the effect of humans on Earth is part of the science standards for the Department of Instruction as well. Obviously, it is about, you know, balance, about really talking about both sides of the issue, not just, you know, obviously one, one side or the other. But it is important for us to talk to our children about the effects of humans on the Earth. And that is pretty much kind of the point of that curriculum and that opportunity. Right now, we do speak about global warming and the impact of humans that have on the Earth. In grades eight, four, four eight, I think are the time when we do that and it's part of the, it's a deep earth science curriculum. We do that too. So, we do expose the kids to the effects of humans on the Earth. And if you look at the multiple sides, I know my current eighth grader, we've had conversations and we've talked about, you know, a lot of different things, but I would say are both sides of the aisle. And that have been being discussed in his classroom and in his grade classroom too as well. So, I'm confident that our staff is able to fulfill the expectation of the state standards as well as demonstrate both sides of an argument like we do in many different topics.
And I, I also encourage parents, know what your kids are doing instructions are. If you have different views, there's your opportunity to talk to your kids. Education is not the school's responsibility, it's the parents' responsibility.
Not only from the eighth grade lens, myself personally, I heard from fourth grade families too as well. Oh, talking about global warming, that's the only thing I've heard from the science curriculum this year.
Can I answer the question? And so, it's only fourth and eighth because I think it has been addressed in other classes.
No, it's, I just rattled, it's, the standards addressed for basically K twelve. It is part of the K twelve science standard. But I know we hit it fourth and eighth specifically, I'd have to go back and take a look at where.
So, can they be exposed at all grades, but where?
I, again, at all grades, I don't think it's. Yeah, Mary, go ahead. Yes, wait a little bit.
Okay, thank you. So, I mean, working with my doctor, hopefully the document that we're on, the progression that we're working with. You can see in comparison to the second grade standard that we're working with however, are the things people believe can affect the environment, but they make choices to reduce it. So, we talk about things like recycle, right? Recycle, that impact, like if you don't recycle, that impacts the environment, we can make different choices to reduce it. And to read across the progression, you see that it's more specific to the idea of global warming. By the time you get to that sixth to eighth grade standard, it specifically is identifying that evidence suggests human activities affect global warming decisions to reduce the impact of global warming depend on understanding climate science, engineering capabilities and social dynamics. So, Dave Wanger in our eighth grade class for the last couple of years has used the EAML curriculum called for its changing climate. It's a specific unit that was purchased to address those things. Kids use different simulations online and they test out things like putting more CO2 into the environment. And then it shows the graphs of what would happen over time to the environment if CO2 was increased or decreased. And so, they're using simulations to talk about future impact and how we're using current impact to impact future environmental conditions. And they look at that aircraft thing. And Dave Wanger has done a phenomenal job of walking that line very carefully. And I know that he has sent things to me over the last five years and Dr. Russell over the last five years to say, am I too close to a political issue? Am I too close to bringing my own values into class as opposed to what science is telling us? And that curriculum has really helped us to focus our attention on what the scientific evidence is and then working through engineering solutions to say, how might we change that? How might we make something that puts less CO2 into the environment? And switching over to inspired science for next year, we've looked at that unit very carefully. Inspired science actually writes it up in its own separate unit, probably we deem for the potential controversy of communities, right? So, when we look at the four books that inspired science offers, these two standards are covered in their own separate book, right? So, that communities who want to be concerned about that can decide that book doesn't exist. And Dave and Melissa and myself looking through it, we think that it's very much in alignment with the way that Dave has been covering it for the last five years, which has not been, I don't think, a giant wave in our community. I don't think the board has heard for the last five years, all sorts of complaints about the way that it has been covered. And so, I feel that if we continue covering it in a similar way to what we have in the last five years, which is what this curriculum allows to do, I think it's exposing our kids to those ideas in a way that's very scientifically based, evidence based. And then families can put their own values alongside that to help kids make decisions. But I do think that we've worked really hard to stay to the evidence and to the science of what data shows. And then people can make their own conclusions about how that came to be.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
And the administration would just be looking for a motion to approve the six eight science curriculum as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the new six eight science curriculum as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and second during discussion. On favor then say aye. All same time. Motion carried. We're on to the handbook revisions, we have discussion.
Sure, this is the first reading of the employee handbook changes. Our policy team did meet on Wednesday the thirteenth, discussed potential employee handbook changes. And a lot of cleanup, a lot of clarification and some details just to kind of keep things current and just kind of updating things as they come up. The biggest point I'd like to highlight probably that has a much more significant impact to staff would be item number seven. Which would be basically changing the personal day request, okay? It's, right now our current handbook language is the last, the last week of the semester, as well as the first and the last week of the semester. You know, you can deny personal days as well as the day before Christmas break or holiday break. But then it also highlights that you can take, you can have no more than three individuals out in one building, okay? Obviously, this year, again, thank you very much to the board for adding, granting additional personal day with the sub shortage being what it is. And with us not being able to kind of portray about what's going to happen next year, we would like to limit the personal day request to be not approved in June. Again, just kind of the end of the year where substitute teachers are very difficult to find. And then changing instead of three per grade level going to two, perhaps, sorry, not grade level, per building. Instead of three, go down to two to get help with that sub shortage. It would require staff to continue the plan ahead and to put in the request earlier. But again, given the shortage of sub days, we'd really like to limit those when those occur in the elections.
So, currently you said that you are able to not approve personal days at the beginning and end of semester?
Yeah, yeah, a week before the first semester, the first week of the semester and the last week of the semester.
Okay, so with the June thing, has an impact of a handful of days. Because there's always going to be the last week.
There's always the last week of school.
Well, we went ahead of school.
But I'd say the last week of school, if you're going to have to go back from June ninth, I'd go to June second.
Yeah.
Seven days.
So, potentially there's, you know, up two or three days depending on what happens.
Correct, yeah.
So, that's not as big of an impact as it initially would seem, right? And then for a, to be limiting the personal days to two instead of three, is that a highest, well, is the intent of that to always only allow two or to be able to say no to a request? Because if you have two people out already, because you know that you're having a heart attack, so. Like sometimes, some, you know, it's not, I think of a deal, you know, you can have five or six people on yourself that's ready to go.
It all depends on the time.
Okay, so it's, it's a safety net for admin organizationally as opposed to a, we're only going to ever have two people.
Correct, and it came like the policy committee about, how often does this happen? And in my past several years, it used to be, again, Jay, I can't recall, nor after the last couple of years, it's been kind of a little bit unique. But typically, it hasn't been an issue. It used to be a really big deal when the rural homeowners, remember that, people would rush to get in. But the board and the employee havoc is pretty lenient on when staff can take personal days. So, because in a lot of handbooks, you can't extend a vacation for a time long. There's a lot of restrictions that about three or four or five years ago, a long time ago, we said, that's ridiculous. Okay, because our calendars, our school calendar doesn't always operate with our spouse's calendar or our family's calendar. And we've always given serious consideration to one-time events and things like that too as well. So, this is just kind of to your point, organizationally, for us to be able to say, hey, we can't find people. And for substitutes for us to say, we're really sorry.
I was just going to have one more question. Is there, if a staff member makes a request for a day off and it gets denied, let's say because of this two-person rule or whatever, is there any recourse that they have to challenge that? Or is it just kind of that's what, like if they feel they're being treated unfairly, you know, obviously with general employment issues, they're.
Correct, yeah, they already go to, maybe this, it starts first level, starts with the building principal. Then they would come to me and then ultimately, the only way it would come in the lap of the board is to perform a complaint was, was filed.
So, they may at least have some way of.
Yeah. Correct.
So, just make sure I understand, because my first time obviously looking at this. So, what Bill said, so it's limited to per building per day. But this doesn't limit the flexibility that principals have or you have if we have subs available that we could have.
We've always given individual consideration. We always have that. So, for instance, if in fact we have three teachers out and someone comes to us and there's a significant issue that happens in the family, we're going to always.
Yeah, it leaves, I would imagine that leaves, you know, admin able to, even if there's only, even if you're not able to get subs from the sub pool, like, you know, there are other people in the building, you know, this is I'm asking up and, you know, covers classes especially this past year and so have. Basically everyone's sitting out there. That works for the school. So, you know, they're still at that point.
And it's a, it's a unique year, the board was gracious enough to give an extra personal day, which has really had impacts. Last Friday, we had eleven teachers out. Six for personal days and, you know, illnesses or other things that may be mustered. But thank you to Mary, Abby and Katie for stepping in for that.
And a week ago Monday, you were really incredible.
Yeah, we were, yeah, Mondays and Fridays are tough. We've got a big thank you to Jim Peterson for celebrating all that. So, again, this is just the first draft, we can continue the conversation. Any clarifications, just let me know. I know last year, I'm sorry, the staff wasn't aware, I had sent a separate email alerting them of the policy recommendations prior to the handbook. of the policy recommendations prior to the, or prior to the board packet meetings.
Any questions? Then we're on to the the revisions. And then we're gonna pass that, we're on to the letters of.
So it's that time of year that uh, we asked the board to approve letters of appointment in anticipation of the uh, beginning twenty one, twenty two school year. Uh, one of the reasons that we do this this early and we do it the best guess we have is to uh, a- avoid workers' unemployment claims as well, because if we give a, an indication about what we anticipate having them back for next year, unemployment then does not get involved. So, again, from an administrative standpoint, this is our best guess about what we need next year for staffing. Um, you will see that the, the individuals who have come back, their hourly wages um, have increased one point five percent per meeting in April. And we talked about a full session compensation for the individuals. Um, I know Dean asked a question today regarding uh, can letters of appointment be changed moving forward? They certainly can. Because again, this is a, a letter of appointment as an active employee and those hours can be changed. If in fact the needs of the district change or if somebody comes to us and it happened today where somebody came and said, hey, I'm really sorry next year, you know, move family situations, I'm not gonna go back. So, or I wanna go part-time or anything else like that too. So, um, again, this is the best guess. If they do change, we do bring them back to the board to uh, make any modifications as needed. So again, the administration is just looking for uh, the board to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty one, twenty two letters of appointment as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty one, twenty two letters of appointment as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same time. Motion carried. We are on to administrative salaries.
Sure. Again, the spreadsheet is listed in the board packet and uh, again, just looking for, I get one point five percent typical for the administration salary pool as well. But uh, the spreadsheet is there. So, I'm just looking for the board to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty one, twenty two administrative salaries as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty one, twenty two administrative salaries as presented.
Any other motion and second? Any questions? All favor then say aye. Both same time. Motion's carried. We are on to the sixty six oh three.
We are very sorry for bringing this back. Arrowhead's uh, swoop. Arrowhead sent us back a new one that said they, they missed some financial things. Uh, they didn't add everything in. Uh, so they were, I've been going back and forth with them. But uh, the, the language, they had their, they had their attorney review it and it was basically our attorney too as well and threw a couple of things up and yeah. Long story short, uh, we'd like to recommend again to reapprove basically the new sixty six oh three agreement with Arrowhead High School to share with Jim Hessler as presented.
I'll make a motion to reapprove Jim Hessler. Arrowhead being his school math teacher as presented.
So we have a motion and a second. Discussion.
What were the, what were the changes?
The, the big fundamental changes was is uh, WRS FICA. Really involved.
Okay.
That's financial, financial, correct.
That portion of what he's working here.
Correct. The number that was presented was his salary. Sure. Not Arrowhead's total compensation to be employed. So.
So what was the increase?
Thirty four hundred dollars? In FICA, WRS. Again, none, nothing with health insurance. Let me spread that out.
Any other questions? All favor then say aye. Both same time. Motion carried. Okay, we're on.
So uh, this past January or December, the board did set um, open enrollment seats and this past year, uh, we took a look at our enrollment indicators and projections that uh, the board did approve unlimited seats for students with non IDPs that were deemed not just speech only, uh, given our special education base loads were full. So um, what you see in front of you in the board packet is the number of applicants that we have for open enrolling in as well as you'll see, we're also required to uh, make a motion to approve the open enrollment students out. If you don't have any recourse, state statute doesn't allow us to disapprove it. And weird, but uh, we still have to make that motion. So, and what you have there is uh, we do have uh, obviously lots of families who have applied in. Some of these families, oh however, are currently here either on tuition waivers or alternate open enrollment applications, which then have to be reapply during the regular open enrollment because they might have been building, they might have been in late. A lot of different uh, situations from that standpoint. So, um, open enrollment, this is the regular open enrollment. Uh, there are alternate, alternate applications that can be uh, received and reviewed by administration throughout the year. And uh, again, the alternate enrollments would have to be approved as well, as long as they don't have an ID, non-speech only, as well as board expulsion.
Are these numbers compared to historical? Are these in line with?
Um, you know, in line with what we've seen before in the past. Uh, we've seen a significant number of families start to move in. And a lot of these too, for instance, as you notice, we see a lot of basements being up. A lot of these numbers too also indicate that they're gonna be future residents because they just wanna start this school year with us, knowing that their home will be done in October. And we've got a handful of people who think they're gonna be in by August first. We always sound a little bit early just to be safe too, but pretty typical. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve all of the enrollment applicants, not coming in with an expelled third order or an IP not cover, not covering speech on the services.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We're gonna do a discussion. All favor say aye. Both same time. Motion's carried. We're on to.
I'm sorry, we need another motion to uh, to approve those people.
I'll make a motion to approve all students who have applied out to our community school districts. There's more in the thing. Just listing how many.
Here with a motion and a second. Discussion.
We have, that currently attend to our school right now, one person has uh, applied for open enrollment out of our district. That's pretty common. Uh, it's actually kind of high. Last year was zero. So, that's an infinite, it's on, it's a hundred percent. So uh, again, we have done a wonderful job, thanks to our staff and our community, to be able to retain our residents uh, here. Those other people, uh, the other thirteen students uh, have not entered our school. Again, very similar where somebody may move into the district and they wanna stay at their current school. Uh, that happens quite a bit too as well.
Okay. All favor then say aye. Both same time. Motion's carried. Lot of future meetings and agenda items?
Sure. Uh, last month, we set June twenty first. Does that still work for everybody? Okay. Uh, we've got the uh, employee handbook, the file, and then ultimately too, we will be approving uh, teacher contracts, which have been out. Again, you have until June fifteenth to set, sign them and get them all back. So, we will have a signing party next week or next month. And uh, so some people are gonna have a sore hand and things. So. But uh, the other piece too is if we can set a time too. So per board policy, we have a uh, a mid-year evaluation of myself, the district administrator. And so again, either can go before at uh, five o'clock or if you wanna go after the meeting, completely up to the board. I don't anticipate it being a long meeting in June. But uh, again, it's up to the board whether you wanna go before or after. Or we can set a different date if people wanna do that too. Before? Aye? Okay, we'll have a full session and final. And then July.
I wanted to add, sure, well, we had talked about trying to have a conversation at the board level with all five of us, the senators, Andrew and myself, to kind of reassess like how, how we want to move, how we want to prioritize things financially and how we wanna make decisions on stuff like that. Cause that, you know, that's probably changed in the last year. We're like this on the board. Um, and we talked about doing it before, the queue meeting, but we'll have to do it at a different time. This was like, oh, you were not on a work session. Yeah, a work session. I don't work at all. It's not like a community thing, but just.
Nope, just a work, work session.
It would be a community.
Yeah, the community's open to it. Yeah.
Also, but as well, like other things have been like purposefully, yes, we're getting in touch with the community. This is just more of an internal discussion.
But it has to be, this has to be something that's an open session.
Sure, cor- correct. It's an open session, but it's outside of the normal board business.
Would you add to the warning? Sounds very long.
I'm gonna talk to you, but I think the revision is getting more and more longer. Conversation would be shorter.
I think so.
Well, just going off.
Yeah, briefly is what we talked about. Yeah, I mean, it probably would be more of a, you know, hour-longish conversation. Like it'd probably be time to do it in a half hour. So, since I don't even know how long the meeting is, I guess we could put it as a potential thing and then we can decide that like, I don't know if it's here till nine o'clock, sort of, you know, talk from financial. I guess, you know, cause it's not that much of a priority. I mean, money's a priority, but it's not like, you know, we can wait till July too and have the discussion.
July usually the agenda is pretty limited.
Very much so. July is very, very limited.
So we could add that into the July agenda. I guess included part of like meeting.
I would still recommend.
He's never had a meeting in July.
It's actually. I still would recommend that we adjourn regular open session and then move into a work session though. Okay? That's fine. We, so July, do you wanna do that?
That's right.
Right, July. Um, what's our date in July? What about July nineteenth?
Do you wanna start at six though? There probably won't be much like regular power sessions. And then just do the other, or we're gonna go to five, three, six, five through the, the regular start time.
I think we could start at six and still be done by seven thirty.
Yes, for sure, for sure. Okay, great.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All favor say aye.
Aye.